We'll call the public hearing back to order. If there are no more questions from commissioners, we have a list of residents who want to speak on PS3. I'll just remind all the residents that we have a three-minute time limit on speaking, and if we can avoid any repeating of something that a previous speaker has already said, if you can just tailor your comments to something that hasn't already been spoken on. So at this time, first, I'd like to call Mr. John DiPremio.
Thanks for entertaining us this evening. What hasn't changed since the Public Safety Committee meeting last week is the numbers. The numbers that were presented then are relevant. The number of violations are nowhere near the numbers that were forecasted. GATSO was supposed to walk away with $540,000 annually from revenue generated from these cameras. That isn't happening. It's not going to happen. It never will happen. The number of accidents and the increase or reduction in accidents are de minimis. They do not have any bearing on whether or not these cameras are working or they are not working. The state of Pennsylvania isn't getting a dime from this program. Abington Township is not getting a dime from this program. The only entity that's getting a dime from this program is the company whose cameras are on our street corners. And did you ask yourself a question? If they're not meeting the criteria and the numbers that they projected, GATSO, and I guess the chief at the time, if they're not getting those numbers, why hasn't the township received a letter from GATSO saying that we're not meeting revenue predictions? These aren't profitable for us. We can't continue to do it. The reason why is because it didn't cost them the amount of money that they're telling us it costs to put those cameras up. I have a release here from the U.S. Department of Transportation. It says the average cost to arm an intersection with red light cameras is anywhere between $67,000 and $80,000 per intersection, not per camera. So GATSO's probably already made their money back on the installation of this equipment. Everything in addition to what's coming in from this point going forward is found money. We are just a money-generating machine for a private entity. We're not benefiting from this. The accidents rates aren't down. The violations aren't up. None of that has come true. These videos are very interesting, and what they show us are reckless drivers that should have been cited for reckless driving and gotten points on their license for driving this way, not $100 fine with no points. That red light camera is showing you a reckless driver. Did the camera stop that reckless driver? No. Why are we doing this? Why are we moving forward with this thing? You know, it's all about public safety. Yeah, I get it. I'd rather see another patrol car on York Road. Do you want to calm traffic? Put more patrol cars on York Road. Set up a system. Talk to FedEx and see how they make their deliveries and how you can incorporate more cars just visible on York Road. They don't even have to be doing anything. Traffic comes to a screeching halt when there's a patrol car behind you. You don't need these cameras. What's in it for Abington Township? What are we gaining by this? You're going to embark on a contract for maybe three years. Do you know the state of Pennsylvania statute that governs red light cameras? Sun sets July 15, 2017? A three-year extension on the contract today exceeds your ability to actually honor that contract, should the state of Pennsylvania sunset that law in 2017. Is anyone talking about this stuff? Of course.
Okay, Mr. DiPremio, you're getting close to your time. Thank you.
Well, I would just say that, in closing, that the company that owns and operates this equipment is making a lot of money off the citizens and this township, and we shouldn't be in the business of underwriting the bottom line of a corporation in this country. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to clear that up. So the question that Mr. DiPremio brought up about the state legislation, the contract anticipates that if there's any change in the law, the contract couldn't be terminated. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are two different provisions in the contract where if the enabling legislation expired, as it is written right now, expiring on July 15 of 2017, the contract would terminate.
Regardless of whether we were to go ahead with a three-year contract or not, if the state legislation disappears, the contract disappears.
Correct. There are two separate provisions that provide, one very explicitly and one a more general provision, that if the law is amended or changed, the contract would terminate.
Right. Not that I'm advocating for it. I'm just mentioning the contract. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Next is Mr. Bill Shaughnessy.
Here to go.
There to go. Mr. Nemiroff.
He left.
He left. Mr. John Walco.
Good evening, John Walco. 2014 Susquehanna Road, also the appointed red light camera hearing officer, which, no matter how the vote comes out tonight, I did want to take the opportunity to thank you for that appointment. It's not lost on me that this is a novel experiment.
Could you elevate that microphone for him?
I'm sorry. I'll try the best I can to speak down. It's not lost on me that this is a novel experiment, that we're the first in the state as a suburb to do this, and that all the eyes are on Abington. I just wanted to speak, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those questions as the hearing officer, about the integrity of the program and the credibility of the program, that I've actually tried to keep up with the police officers involved with this program to maintain that, because they are doing an absolute dynamite job. If you were to receive a normal red light ticket, and you may have received those for any traffic tickets, you get the ticket, then you get something in the mail that says, "Go to this district court, guilty or not guilty. If you plead guilty, send in your fine." The fine is usually more than $100 with those court costs on top of it. If you plead not guilty, you get the opportunity to appear in court. You'll get another notice to show up in court. If you don't show up, you're going to be found guilty. No one's going to contact you. No one's going to make sure that you're there. No one's going to speak to you beforehand to see if you have an issue. Maybe at the court hearing, you get a chance to speak to the police officer, and maybe he'll amend that ticket to a lesser charge. You have hardly any real personal contact once you get that ticket, except for the initial stop with the police officer. In this program, just so people are aware, you get the citation in the mail or fine in the mail, whatever you'd like to call it, with the picture. You can go to the website. You can look at the video. If you want to pay, the $100 without the points, you can do that. Or you can say, "I would like a hearing." At that point in time, you will be contacted by the Abington Police to see, you know, what issues you have, if there's anything that can be worked out. Make sure that you're aware of the date of the hearing. Make sure that you're able to make it to the hearing if you need a continuance. They hold your hand. At the hearing, they, again, will work with you. What are the issues? What are the problems? A lot of them don't even reach me as a hearing officer, and they sometimes, and correct me if I'm wrong, don't even reach the police because the funerals, the emergency vehicles are pulled out by GATSO. The ones that reach me are usually people who haven't responded to the police or don't really have a very valid reason. But one of the things I wanted to address was the issue of those appeal numbers and who is found liable and not liable. And to be clear, anyone that I have found not liable, I probably could have found liable 90% of the time, but for reasons that they gave and for the personal attentions and for the considerations and the integrity of the program that I think this board wanted to have, we were able to work with them. I can give many examples. We don't try to call people liars. If you say that your wheels lock up because you're hydroplaning, we can sort of see that, which is what we usually got. If it looks like that's happened, we're going to find you not liable. If you say that, "I was out to dinner with my spouse. Here's a receipt," and it shows it's the same time, we're going to find you not liable. I can't tell you how many times we've had people show up not knowing they've had a defense, and we've pointed out to them, "Well, because you're telling us that, we cannot find you liable." And we do this to keep the integrity of the program. I have had more people leave thanking me, and the police, I should say, than that are angry. And often, those people are people who have been found liable. But I just wanted to speak because I think that it's important to know that there is a personal aspect to this program, that it's not, you're not left to your own devices. It's not like some of these other programs where no one's going to listen to you. No one's going to understand where you're coming from and take you and your situation without consideration of that. So that's probably why those non-liable, there's a discretion there. It's not because there are any errors with the police or that they shouldn't have been found liable, but more for the personal attention that I think this board really wanted to have added to this program. So I'm happy to answer any questions. To me, I'm still looking to find the downside of the program. I don't see the downside at this point in time. I think the 47%, as a resident, and obviously, you know, I'm the hearing officer, so take what I say with the grain of salt, the 47% to me seems to be a huge drop, that before people were running that light, now they're not. I think that if you were to take those cameras away and those signs go away that say that they're not red light cameras anymore, it would go back up. And we can't see those near misses. We have recollections or we have reports of accidents, but not of the near accidents. And I think, you know, obviously, those are some bad situations. A lot of them aren't as bad, but they still could be, and I think it's still deterring that. So I think there's a benefit, and again, I don't see the downside, and that's...
All right, Mr. Walco, I gave you a little bit of latitude there because I think we needed an explanation from you. So if that's it, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Katalin Flasheya?
Sorry. Flora.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to mention that, of course, I'm new in the neighborhood. I moved here last year. I would like to say I'm honored to be in the presence of Chief Kelly, the council, and to acknowledge Ben Sanchez, which is the commissioner for my district, or the district I live in. Also, keep in mind that we are dealing with, indeed, high technology. It's latest, you know, cameras, body cameras, red light cameras. I understand that technology very well. I built these cameras or similar. There are new things coming, and you guys might know. You can measure the exhaust of a car and see if it's out of regulations. You can measure alcohol volume in a car as it's passing on the highway, and you can know if there is an open bottle of alcohol coming on the highway. So technology is fantastic, and prices are high because it's fantastic. So with that in mind, I think there are good parts for this program in Abington, and there are bad parts, and all I want is to bring my perspective on it. The good part is the fact that slows people down. And I got a ticket. I turned right on red at Susquehanna and whatever, right by the community center. So I'm speaking from experience. It did reduce crashes. We have your data published, April through May. It's actually 13% if you do the math. There are 31 crashes. They reduced to 27. That's 13% reduction. That means also cost savings, car repairs, stress on the people having to deal with that. So that's a good part, and I think it's good that you provided the numbers, and I would like to have those numbers. They are not available online. I would like to check themselves, myself, those numbers. You can't say we don't need to prove as long as we go in the right direction, because that's a very vague statement. We need the numbers, and they make the case. The bad part of this program is that $42,000 a month from the residents' money, actually just 20% residents, 80% are non-residents, are going to this company in New York, which is a subsidiary of a company from Holland. So that's what got my attention. My fine came from New York. The envelope was addressed to me from New York State, and I was very surprised. Why is my money going outside of the state? So while the neighborhood doesn't pay, the township doesn't pay, actually, people pay, $42,000 a month. And I'm not discussing cost model, because that's your problem, and I'm sensitive to that. I'm a program manager on technology, and it's very hard to make money with technology. If they do, it doesn't matter for us. It matters that people pay $42,000 a month for this program. For what? For four crashes reduced from August last year through May this year. It's not that much. Percentage-wise, I take 7%, 14%, those are good percentages. But four crashes in the big picture, we are not trying to treat malaria. We want to make zero cases of malaria in the world. That's maybe a noble cause. Reducing the number of crashes to zero in Abington Township at a cost of $40,000 a month, that's maybe questionable. I'm almost done. So, and the ticket also is very affecting, it's affecting people which gets those tickets. And most of those dumb heads don't afford, cannot afford to pay those tickets. It creates, it brings stress to other people which cannot afford those violations. And I'll conclude that I think the good and the bad are balanced in the program. I'll give that. But the community or the leadership is failing to make a strong case for action in Abington. And two things I heard from our senator was that Pennsylvania is one of the worst in the nation on fatal crashes. Top four states in the nation are California, Texas, Florida, and New York. We are in the second tier. It's pretty bad, but that's the number of total crashes. You know what? Pennsylvania is a huge state. It has 8.3 million people. If you report to that, sorry?
Okay. You've reached your three minutes. Can you wrap it up, please?
Yes. So if you report to 100,000 people, Pennsylvania is somewhere in the middle. So it's not that bad. It's crashes. People die. People are driving gasoline-powered metal cages on the road. Same thing in the state. Number of crashes in Abington is quite high. If you look based on population and traffic, it's average. We are not special. And last, Montgomery Traffic, Traffic Crashes, because you want the statistics through the years, 2009 through 2013, there is an up and down. It's not decided. Red lights can help, but at what cost do you want zero crashes? Thank you.
Okay, sir. Thank you. All right. Last is Mr. Victor Crevens. Thank you, sir.
Victor Crevens, 3505 West Moreland Road, and I've personally looked at these three intersections and they really have a problem, which has gotten a bit better since the cameras are there. I'm very much in support of the cameras, and I hope you will renew the contract with them, because there are a lot of idiots out in the road that don't pay attention. They're either on a cell phone or doing other things. They're not paying attention to the road, and they cause accidents. And one thing I learned when I was in judges' school, among other things, was that if you can't get something through to somebody, you give them a ticket, and it sort of sinks in then. But otherwise, if you just tell them not to do it or put a sign up, it means nothing. And I see people go through stop signs all the time here in Abington. It doesn't mean a thing. It's a four-way stop sign, and they figure they're going to stop on the other side. So it's very important that we continue this thing, because as we used to say in judges' school, it puts some teeth into the law for the police. So it's very important to have these cameras, and as you know, a camera does not lie. A camera tells it the way it is. There's no question about it. So I urge you people to continue this thing. You did a great job in getting it to start with, and let's continue with it, because actually, $100 fine and no points, you're almost like, it's a slap on the wrist. So if you pay that, I mean, hopefully, you'll learn a lesson and not do it again.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right. Yes, sir. Well, you didn't sign in, but I didn't use, you spoke at the, okay, come on. Give your name and address, please, in three minutes. I didn't see your name on here, but I...
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to sign in. There was a big crowd. My name is David Zuplansky. I'm at 2967 Lincoln Ave. in Artsley. And I was looking at the statistics. I brought them last week, and I'm sure the commissioners have seen them. And I listened to the chief and to the commissioners speak and to the different people who presented their arguments. I mentioned that I had some background in statistics, economics, and so forth, and these things can be skewed depending on how you look at them. I'm not saying purposely, but you're looking, when you're looking for something, then you pile on what you're looking for, and you come up with this percentage. But I got this from the Abington Township Police Department website. I mentioned it last week, and the comment was, "It's all wrong," but it's right here, and the commissioners can see it, that Old York and Susquehanna, yes, the crashes went down, but I checked the lights, and that yellow was really short. And I had the times. They were short, and other people have complained about it. There was some comment about it last week. Now, Old York and Welsh went from 10 to 9, which is just about the same. Fitzwater Town in Moreland, which is the one I was questioned on, went from six crashes August 14 to May 14 to nine crashes in August 14 to 15. 50% increase. We don't need these cameras. All right. Let me also say that, you know, I'd be happy to pass this around, but I'm sure you've seen Last week, there were five citizens that spoke, and some people were elderly, they had to leave tonight. I don't know what the statistics would be on the amount of people that stood up, but last time that we were here, there were five people that spoke, according to my recollection. Five. Four of them stood up against the red light cameras. I haven't heard a significant voice from the commissioners, although I hear the reticence in your voices from your constituents when I listen to you speak, but I haven't heard anybody say, "No." My constituents say, "We don't want them." It's "I, I, I." And I want to hear, "No." That's what I want to hear, because that's what the citizens are telling you here.
Do you have much more time?
Red light cameras are losing the battle nationwide. Los Angeles lost $1.5 million. They're closing them down.
Can you wrap it up, sir?
Have I been three minutes already?
No. Actually, yes. I'll give you another minute. Go ahead.
All right. The only other thing I wanted to say was, and I appreciate the time, is that we should invest in those signal lights. They work. There's no proof that these red light cameras work, and they've been pulling them out of so many different states. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? Name and address, please, in three minutes.
Donna Brewer, 1644 Arnold Avenue. I just wanted to say briefly that, based upon everything I heard here this evening, I really admired the presentation that Chief gave us, but in weighing out everything that I heard here this evening, I agree with the gentleman, the previous speaker, that I would hope that the commissioners take into consideration what your constituents are requesting of you. With that said, it seems to me that Mr. Noble really laid it out, how he's losing money, and how this endeavor starts out losing a tremendous amount of money, and that he may or may not ever get his money back. And as a businessman, it just doesn't seem like someone would stay in business to lose money. And I don't, personally, I don't believe everything I hear, but common sense says that if he's not profiting, why is he continuing to do that here? Finally, I just want to say that what the downside is, the gentleman said he hadn't heard any downside, that camera takes a picture of a license, a plate, and that person is sent a citation, whether you're the driver or not, you are inconvenienced if you have to take off of work, or whatever the case may be, to want to put up an argument that that wasn't me, and/or just pay $100, no points, no accountability, where the real culprit in most cases will go free to do it again. So this is not the most effective way of enforcement and reducing crashes. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? Name and address, please, in three minutes.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. I think the, probably the largest problem I had, and I thank some of the commissioners who took the time to bring some of this up, is that the accidents are what we're trying to stop, okay? Every single one of us in this room has gone through a red light or a stop sign at some time and went, "Wow, I'm glad a car wasn't coming. Whoa, you know, what was I doing?" Every one of us has done that, okay? And so a lot of these films that we see are those people doing that. But we do have people that are serious violators, and we do have accidents caused, but these red light cameras are not stopping those accidents. The statistics are not there. And the most egregious thing is the constant requests that I have made, and I think others have made as well, for the historical fluctuations, the normal fluctuations. And you had a slide up there in this presentation where you saw, for instance, in 2013, two crashes, in 2014, one crash, and in 2015, one crash. And I believe you were encouraged to believe that that was a reduction. That was not a reduction. In 2014, the cameras were not in yet. The reduction came without any cameras. And the same slide, the same type of slide, was presented where Chief Kelly absolutely said there's a slight decrease in the previous presentation, when I think it was 13 first, and it went down to 11 and 11. And in 2014, the 11 moved down from 13 without red light cameras. I am really appalled that that kind of a presentation could be given, which presented false information to you and to all the public, but not just to the Abington public. We're now learning that that is possibly all through Pennsylvania, since we're becoming a model, and it's up to you to not rely on that kind of a statistic and that kind of a presentation. The yellows were not extended, and they should have been, and we need to do those things. We need to put up the flashers. The thing that it really affects is the economic impact in this township. We have people driving around, and in fact, I believe, although they were not presented tonight, and it seemed that we were remiss on that, I think I have the figures from 2014, from either Adams Avenue or Church Road, because I was one of the ones who asked for them. And Commissioner Klein is correct. We did ask for them, and it does seem rather unusual that those figures would go missing, okay? Those were very important figures that Chief Kelly would know are very important figures to this particular process, and we made sure that we asked for it before. So I am appalled at that kind of a presentation and that you would rely on it in any way, okay? And there's absolutely no reason to extend anything beyond a month-to-month at the most until you do yellows and all the things you should do. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for public comments. Yes, sir. Name and address in three minutes.
Fran Early, 356 Central Avenue, North Hills. I'm in favor of the red light cameras. Like, without the statistics, I'll give you an example. I work in a store up in Doylestown where the trucks come into my store, and the vendors all aware of, "Oh, you live in Abington." And all these drivers, one particular chip company has it on their... And all these drivers, one particular chip company has it on their trucks. Be careful why you're in Abington, they have red light cameras. Public awareness keeps people safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think, uh, I think we've heard both sides, uh, from commissioners and the public. Any comments from staff? Okay, uh, we still have two more committees to go through before we conclude our agenda. So, um, let me get my place here. I think we can close, a motion to close the hearing?
I so move.
At this point, we'll close the hearing. And I'll read the motion, which lists as follows. Motion to consider the extension of the red light camera agreement with Gatsco USA Inc. for one three-year term running through September 30th, 2018, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Commissioners, a call?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, put on the floor right now, to, um, amend, to retool that three-year contract, okay? And lower the three years, okay? Uh, to a year, or I'll even compromise to two. But for three years, I, I cannot accept that, okay?
I think you want to go one or two.
If we are going to consider doing any other of the variables that we talked about, could we make it two years so that we could, because it seems to me-
If, if we're going to do that, I'll agree to that. But three years, I'm, I'm not going to agree to that at all. So the motion's on the floor.
Your motion is to amend the original motion to a two-year period?
If we're going to do what was stipulated that we're going to do.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the motion to a two-year term.
And just to make a comment, oh, I'm sorry. Just to make a comment, or I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
Going to see if we could have, um, I hear the two years, but have a, a one-year date where there would be a data presentation that we would have a hard data presentation so that we ensure that we get this information. So I don't know if that needs to be part of the motion or not, but it'd be nice to have the data in a year.
So you're expanding his motion from, so a two-year with a one-year?
Yeah, I don't really think you need to do that. I think you're, you're approving a contract with this company. The motion is for two years, it's been seconded. I think what Commissioner Jones is suggesting can be a direction to Chief Kelly. And I think he's nodding his head that he'll give you that data presentation a year from now.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Chief.
I'll make my comment.
I just wanted to get a clarification. I think what I hear Commissioner Zepone saying is that he, the motion would be for two years if it were included, that the other traffic calming measures that have been discussed tonight would be part of that.
Right. And just to make a, a final comment, um, the results of my survey, I took a survey in my ward, okay, and the results of my survey, survey were the majority of those residents that responded were in favor of the red light cameras. I just want to make that perfectly clear. I did do a survey, and the final results came in today. And majority of those residents were in favor of them. So I just want that on record.
Oh, we're talking about surveys. I've gotten about 35 to 40 emails, and I think maybe I've gotten five that were in favor of the red light cameras.
So there's a motion on the floor to amend the original motion? I'm sorry.
Actually, thank you, but actually, I did, after we left last week, um, put a survey out too, and it was, they weren't in favor. Because I left here like, okay, wh-what do people think?
Were or were not, Carol? Were not in favor?
Were in favor, were in favor. Were, W-E-R-E.
I did a survey over 140, and I got 44% for and 44% against, so I can't help you guys.
I also did, I also did a survey, and they were in favor.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
I'm sorry.
Was that seconded?
It was seconded by Commissioner Myers.
Two-year con, two-year contract seconded.
Yes. Okay, so the motion on the floor is a two-year extension, and it was seconded by Commissioner Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on, hold on. Let's go with a show of hands. All those in favor, show of hands?
This is of the two-year-
The amended motion.
The amended.
Two-year extension.
Hold on a second.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Clarification?
No, I apologize, but the, the motion is just read did not include the additional stipulation that, that, is that not part of this?
No, because I, I'm not sure, and, and, um, I apologize because I don't know this. Are we saying we're contracting with Gatsco to do these additional traffic calming devices?
I don't think-
Okay. You're only approving a two-year contract with Gatsco.
That's what I want to get clarity about.
These additional traffic calming devices are, again, a direction that you'll all give to Chief Kelly, and, and he'll do. But all you're doing right now is approving a, an extension of the agreement with Gatsco for the two years as, as the motion was made by Commissioner Zepone.
And do we have to vote on the amendment, or do we just, are we, is the, is the motion already amended, and now you're just voting on the total?
Um, I think you're just voting on the motion made by Commissioner Zepone and seconded by Commissioner Myers for a two-year contract with Gatsco. I don't think you need to vote on the amendment and then vote on the motion. I think you can just vote on the motion.
So just a one?
Yeah, just a one vote.
And we'll take a show of hands on the, uh-
Can I make just one?
Okay, great, sir.
I'll be done. It's important that all the comments the commissioners made about the surveys is very important and part of the minutes of this meeting. Okay, thank you.
Two years.
All right, uh, any other comments on the motion? It's been moved and seconded for a vote for an extension of two years. All those in favor, show of hands? Those opposed? All right, so the motion passes.
Like, can I make a motion from the floor?
I'm sorry?
Can I make a motion from the floor? Brand new, but it, I might be out of order. Is it possible to make a brand-new motion related to what we were looking for with the, the yellow lights?
A motion, I, I don't know what the motion is.
I might be using the wrong term, and if I'm out of order, then I'll, I'll accept that.
I think, I think the two things that have been directed are directions to your, your Chief of Police, who administers this program. I don't know if it needs to be done by a motion, but I don't know what your motion is at the moment.
I just heard from other, from, what I am, and if I'm the only one, I thought I heard from a couple other commissioners that they would like to actually see this, to some extent, codified, if that's the correct term, also that were memorialized in a stronger way than a directive, that we would actually, A, get the data, and B, that we would look into these other implementa, implementations. And I could be wrong in that, and if I'm wrong in that, I'm okay with that.
Well, might I make one suggestion? In lieu of the time, I think this is a longer conversation. We still have two committees to go. Why don't we table that, and we can bring it up at a future public safety meeting and have conversations with the police department on that? Would that be all right, Commissioners, gents?
You, you, you do have another, uh, motion that you need to make with regards to the agreement that you've just approved. When you originally approved Article 1 of Chapter 55, Chapter 155, excuse me, um, you created a sunset provision for 155-17, which indicates that these articles shall expire one calendar year from the date the automated, automated red light camera system becomes operational unless the Board of Commissioners, following a public hearing, votes to further extend the effectiveness of the article. I would ask that a motion be made to extend Article 155, uh, excuse me, Chapter 155, Article 1, for a period, uh, to coincide with the agreement just entered into with Gatsco.
So for a period of two years?
Yes.
Need someone to make it, I guess, right?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Who made it?
I'll make a motion to extend Chapter 155, Article 1, for the two-year period that we just approved for the Gatsco contract.
I'd rather you do it to the, to make it not the two-year period, just to say to coincide with the agreement with Gatsco, because there's still a little overlap from the, the previous contract.
I make a motion to extend Chapter 155, Article 1.
To coincide with-
To coincide with the, uh, just-approved contract.
Okay, seconded by?
Second.
By Peggy Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
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 10 to 5? All right, uh, so that, uh, closed, oh, I'm sorry. So that closes the hearing for?
Before we move on, I just want to make sure we're agreement that, is that all right with you, Commissioners, that we table that to the next public safety meeting?
It's okay, I, I just think part of the things that we heard is, and this is, this is throwing no disparity towards the Chief or towards the, the police department. I just think part of this, this disparity we heard is that we were looking for certain things, and we weren't necessarily sure what we got. Now, if at our next meeting, I almost think it's unfair to the Chief to just say, "We're giving him a directive to give XYZ at 11:09 PM." I would hate, you know, I work for a board of trustees also, and I would hate for my board to say, "Hey, by the way, Larry, do this, 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 and this," in a year, and then if I come back a year later, and I don't have exactly what the board or the community wanted, then people are going to look at me like I screwed up. So I think that if we have this communication, I'm okay with, I am okay with that, if we have that communication, but I just think that we need to have clarity and also have it memorialized, not only for the community and the commissioners, but also for the Chief and his staff as well, because to give them direction without that clarity would be unfair.
Which is what we can do at the public safety meeting, in a fut, future public safety meeting.
All right? Okay, Commissioner Schreiber?
That concludes our agenda.
Thank you. All right, John Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Public Affairs, our first item tonight is PA 4. Um, the hiring of Carter Van Dyken Associates for Briar Bush Master Sand, Master Site Plan Project. This is a motion to approve the hiring of Carter Van Dyken Associates to perform all the functions necessary to complete a master site plan for the Briar Bush Nature Center for $29,980, and I so move.
Second. Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
PA 2 is Resolution Number 15-030 Fair Housing. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 15-030, Annual Fair Housing Resolution, to further fair housing practices within the township of Abington, and I so move.
Second. The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? From staff or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
PA 3, Substantial Amendment to the Community Development Block Grant. This is, uh, approve the motion to advertise the public hearing on the substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant scheduled for 7:30 PM on Thursday, November 12th, 2015, in the second-floor boardroom of the Abington Township Administration Building, located at 1176 Old York Road, Abington, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Name and address, please?
Yes, Donna Brewer, 1644 Arnold Avenue. Um, I want to, I'm trying to understand, this motion is to approve that the public hearing be, um-
Advertised.
Made public? Is that what this motion is?
It's a motion to advertise. We're basically going to advertise the public hearing. The actual public hearing will be at the November board meeting here. But legally, it has to be advertised, and we have to vote to advertise it.
Okay, and then my second part is, um, it seems that you're making a substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant. Now, the last time I was here, it was, um, in regard to this type grant, and it was very well laid out how, um, that portions of money would be, um, spent. So what I'm seeing now is that although you can lay out a plan of how that money is going to be spent, you can do a substantial amendment at any time, is that correct?
Is that correct?
I'm trying to answer that question.
Direction on that?
Director Struthers is saying, yes, that's correct.
Mr. Struthers, if you're willing to come up and clarify that point?
And remember, this is a motion to advertise.
Right.
If there's questions about the substantial amendment, that could be done at the public hearing. This is a motion to advertise, not a discussion on the amendment.
I, I, I asked a specific question. I'm clear on what the motion is now. I just asked a specific question regarding the ability to do a substantial amendment. That, that's all my question was. Everything was really methodically laid out of how the, the money was going to be distributed. And so I just have a question that, once you lay out how it's going to be distributed, you, can you come back, I mean, is this normal standard practice to come back two months later and do a substantial amendment? That's all I'm asking. It's not a big deal, I'm just trying to learn how the procedure works. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a procedural matter that the governing body, before you bring it before the governing body, you have to give notification. So the answer to the question is yes. We're just following the procedural process to notify by having a public hearing and giving, getting, requesting permission from the governing body to advertise, to have this hearing in November.
But I think, I think the question is, you, you're, you're looking for a substantial amendment now. In six months, could you do another subs, substantial amendment?
Yes.
And then another six months after that, if you chose to, you could do another substantial amendment?
Yes.
So the township could do a substantial amendment to this block grant program at any time, as long as we advertise it correctly and go through the procedures that are, that are prescribed?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Very good, that explains that. Thank you, sir. All right, continue, sir.
All right, to vote on that.
Oh, did we, uh, vote, I don't think we voted on that.
We did not vote on it, again.
Uh, was it seconded?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Uh, PA 4, Pennsylvania Child Protective Services, Protection Services Law Funding. This is a motion to authorize the expenditure of up to a maximum of $6,000 in the contingency account to cover the costs associated with processing the child abuse clearances and criminal record checks of township employees and volunteers, as mandated by the amended Pennsylvania Child Protection Services Law, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? From staff? From the audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Uh, PA 5 has been deleted, and that concludes our, uh, Public Affairs agenda, Mr. President.
Commissioner Spiegelman. Vice President Stephen Klein, Director of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. Treasurer Blumenthal is not with us tonight, he's on vacation. Uh, the treasurer's report is available for viewing and for examination at the Township Manager's Office, if anybody's so interested. We'll start with the agenda. FC 1 Investments, Motion to Approve Investments for the Month of July as previously circulated to the Board. It was noted that investments for the month totaled $1,060,000. Interest rate yields ranged from 0.8% to 1.15%, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff or the public?
Still, Donna Brewer, 1644 Arnold Avenue. So, um, where can we find exactly where this million-dollar investment went? Is it, is it listed somewhere I can find?
It's part of the Township Agenda for the Finance Committee. It's available under a right to know. You can file that with the Township Manager's Office, and that, that information is readily available. It's one of the reports that we review each, each month.
So, uh, file a right to know, but other than that, it's not just listed somewhere? I can just go read it? It happened at the last meeting, is that what you're saying, the Finance Committee?
It happened at the last finance meeting, it was examined. At that point, we get them every month, and we examine them at the finance meeting. It's part of our normal agenda, it's available at the Township Manager's Office if you'd like to review it.
Thank you.
It actually might even be online, I don't-
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
FC 2, Motion to A, Approve the July expenditures as previously circulated to the Board in the amount of $5,814,989.67, and salaries and wages in the amount of $1,852,999.54. And B, authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers in the payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of October 2015, and I so move.
Second. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Could I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Sutcliffe?
Yes.
Spiegelman?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Donoski?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Yes.
DeCicito?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Colesky?
Yes.
Heckler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
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 FC 3, Motion to Approve the Advance and Travel Expense Activity for July 2015 as Previously Circulated to the Board. Advance and Travel Expense Reports were $0 and $942.07, respectively. Seven-month expenses totaled $26,463.29, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Residents? Any, none, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes.
FC 4, Motion to Approve the Clearing Fund and Deferred Revenue Expense Activity and Petty Cash Balances for the Month of July as Previously Circulated to the Board. July Petty Cash Balances Previously Circulated to the Board. Clearing Fund Receipts and Disbursements for the Month of July 2015 were $19,273.72 and $2,538.30, respectively. Deferred Revenue Expense Receipts and Disbursements for the Month of July 2015 were $0 and $0, respectively, and I so move.
Second.
They're moving to second it. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Any, none, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes.
And one quick comment. I wanted to thank all the department heads who showed, who attended the Finance Meetings over the last few months in examination of their 2016, or their current budgets in 2016, proposed budgets, or ideas going forward, and also the committee for putting, putting up and going through all those examinations. And that concludes our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Heckler, Director of the Pension Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. We have one item of business this evening. This is PENS1, Resolution Number 15-031, Minimum Municipal Obligation Pension Plans, and this is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 15-031, recognizing that the township's minimum municipal funding obligation for the calendar year 2016 with respect to the municipal employee and police pension plans is $782,023 and $1,139,264, respectively, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Staff or residents? Any, none, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes.
That concludes our business.
Okay, that concludes our formal agenda for the evening, so...
Okay.
That's the next portion of the...
Get ready to say that.
He's getting ready to say that.
Now, we'll take comments from the public.
Good evening. My name is Louise E. Twyman, 1672 Franklin Avenue, Willow Grove, Pennsylvania. The behavior at the last public affairs meeting with the lies, the arrogance, and the venom displayed by some of the commissioners are shameful. We asked Mrs. Laura Layman to join our committee, and she has been invaluable with truthful information, as well as pointing out where the funds are located and where the other facilities are that the township is already supporting financially. Her knowledge has helped our committee greatly. Mrs. Layman is a trusted friend. She is to be admired for having the courage to stand before the board with pertinent information of most activities of the township in effort to keep things transparent despite the ridicule and attacks on her. In my opinion, every township should have a person like Mrs. Layman representing their community. I am proud to have her as my friend. President Luker, you have been Ward 5 Commissioner for over 24 years, and of course you have represented with some projects and grant money. I have verbally thanked you and Doug Wendell for upgrading Rubicon Park. However, there is still some unfinished business for this ward, a community center. On May 20, 2015, this board accepted the concept of a PAL building at Crestmont Park. Thus, the Crestmont Community Center Committee was organized, and we have expressed our displeasure through petition signing, although we stopped when we had some hope, and public appearances at the Board of Commissioner hearings. The Community Center Committee meet every Wednesday and have followed through on all of the suggestions from the board and their staff. President Luker has refused to meet with this committee. They and Struthers met us only to inform us that the five-year grant money would not be used in our favor. Larry Mateo meant to suggest that we set up a meeting with the township manager. Commissioner Markman promised to help us with grants, but decided would only do through LaFever. When we met with LaFever, he promised to arrange meetings between PAL and our committee, and then at some point, we were given to understand that PAL was not interested in a door building as some had suggested. And now, we're back at the table, asking the board to please put the Crestmont Community Center on the agenda so that we can offer you the concept of a community center with their financial and maintenance plans. It is our right as taxpayers and residents of this township. We need your help. Please work with us by putting us on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents?
If we stay a little longer, I could say good morning, but I'll start with good evening. I wish we would work hard to be a little friendlier, regardless of the topic. What I observed tonight is that a course to statistics was delivered, but you have to have numbers for statistics. You can't deliver ideas. I failed statistics at temple, but that I did learn. One of the problems I observed tonight, unless each commissioner handles idea in the same way, we do not have a survey in Ward 5-1 or 5-2. I think that puts your information somewhat at a disadvantage, because if you and talked to 40 people, and he talked to 44, and I talked to 3, the data is inconclusive. I hope that we would stop and understand, we have to do this thing together. We cannot do it regardless of what the topic is with biased information. I'd like to thank the township and Mrs. Myers' husband. We were able to open the Veterans of Foreign War, number 3398, and we got our license back, and our job is done by the support of everyone in the community. I thank you, Mr. Luker, for what you did do, but I said to you the other day, everybody's friend is nobody's friend. We only have to stand on the side of right to be successful, and let's keep that in mind, and I invite you to come to the Veterans of Foreign War, because now we're open. I wanted the building saved, because that building was built by African-American men who served in World War II, and if you know your history, African-Americans did not fight the war. They cooked the meals, cleaned the trucks, and took here to latrine. So, again, let's work, I've been a little friendlier about things that really matter. Whether we have red lights or no red lights, that doesn't give you safety. It's the attitude of people who's driving a car. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bing. Any other comments from residents?
Yes. Donna Brewer, 1644 Arnold Avenue. The last time I was here, I spoke very emotionally, to say the least, regarding the topic about the block grant monies, and having done what we were instructed to do, I guess I foolishly held out hope that the most, the ward that has the most need for HUD money was being rejected where it mattered most. So, I held out hope, and I was very, very disappointed at the end of the day. And I made a statement that nobody here is representing Ward 5, and I said, "None of the Commissioners and none of the staff here were representing Ward 5." And after I left, I was able to find out that different people got up and they applauded our president, who is the Commissioner for Ward 5, and how wonderful man he is, and so on and so forth. And so, Commissioner Luker, I want you to know that when I made that statement, it was not personal. I've always thought you were a gentleman, and I still do. The statement I was making was in regard to representing the needs, desires, concerns of residents of Ward 5, and you can't speak to that unless you live there, unless you are currently a member of that ward. For example, I just heard a couple Commissioners say they did surveys in the ward regarding the red light camera. There was none done in our ward, none. So, that's just one example, and I can give you more and more. Don't want this to turn negative, and I don't want it to turn into an attack. I'm here to explain my position that night. So, you know, the shenanigans and, you know, speaking up and playing up to the camera and all of that that went on after I left, it just seemed like it was so unnecessary, because I was speaking as a resident of Ward 5, and unless you live there, you can't say how we are being represented. Another thing I wanted to add is that Pastor Hall, the gentleman who stood up and spoke and said how there was crime in our ward, he was told that Chief Kelly wanted to meet with him. Chief Kelly was told that Pastor Hall wanted to meet with him. Commissioner Luker established that meeting. Neither one of them knew that the meeting was going to happen. Commissioner Luker did establish that meeting, and my point is, is there anything our Commissioner wants to do, he will do it. We have invited him to come to our meetings regarding the community center. He has failed to appear at any meeting. Furthermore, I requested by email that we be put on the public affairs agenda, as well as the full board agenda, so that we could present the concept of a community center being built in our ward, and basically the same thing happened, like my mother just explained, you know, I'm passed to the head of public affairs, and he didn't get back to me, and so on and so forth, and nothing happens. And the bottom line is this, as a resident there, when one of you publicly state, those people don't know what they're doing, they met with Larry, they met with this person, they met with that person, they met with Luker, you don't know that. So, you can make public statements that sound good, and you speak very well to the cameras, but some things you're saying are not factual, and it's a shame that we have to come back and try to defend our position. All we're asking for is help from the township. The residents in Ward 5 are taxpayers, and they deserve to at least be heard and hopefully get help like every other ward in this township. Thank you very much for listening to me. Again, never intended anything negative toward you, Commissioner Luker. I was speaking from the perspective of a resident, so, thank you very much.
All right, any other comments from residents?
Laura Layman, 1431 Bryant Lane, and as you can see by my attire, yes, Commissioner Klein, we do have a committee. We have been meeting. We are organized, and as you just heard from these ladies, we have done everything that one could do, and we have been passed back and forth and told things that are not consistent or true. The lack of organization has been on the other side. Commissioner Markman told us that he's happy to help us with the resources, because he, they do that as part of the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority, and he chided the Speaker, saying that she didn't have to be upset that one project was bad and her project wasn't, because all projects could be embraced, but we're being told quite the opposite. When she went to Commissioner Markman, he sent her to Mr. LaFever.
Can we not mention names and just move forward? Thank you.
Well, then, how would anybody understand what had happened? Because we were sent then to the manager's office, who pretty much told us that the only way that we were going to do anything is if we did it with PAL. And the signatures that we have that are represented from the community have said that the residents want a self-directed center, not PAL, that deals with a small segment of the society, and, and for other reasons, too. And this is what you're hearing here from these people, and what you're saying and what was said at the last meeting is not true and needs to be corrected. We did just have the VNA representative somehow got on the agenda just like that. He's not a resident, okay? He runs, he's, was the attorney for effectively a business, a nonprofit business. They do good work, but they're a nonprofit business, and somehow he got on the agenda just like this and spoke for over 20 minutes and presented his case, and at the end, even without the agreement of all the Commissioners, the Commissioner that was handling that said, "Oh, I think we all agree that he's going to work with our solicitor, and our solicitor is apparently at our expense going to lay out a plan for him." These residents are looking for that kind of help. They've been promised that kind of help, and it's not forthcoming. We're asking you again to please keep your promises, be forthcoming, be honest with the residents, and stop trying to divide everybody and play games with one or the other behind the scenes. Address us as a complete committee. We've sent you our names. You know what we're about, and respect us all. Thank you.
Any comments from residents? Yes, sir. Name and address?
Ryan Griffith, 640 Maple. I just heard something. I'm not clear if that's exactly a fact, and I heard something about honesty, and I heard that the people in Ward 5 want a community center, not a PAL. I'm a PAL volunteer, and I speak to people in Ward 5 every day, if not every other day, and I'm not exactly sure if that's correct. Most of the people I speak to are in favor of PAL. I don't know if PAL is going to end up in Ward 5, but I'm interested in PAL being in Ward 5, and I will go door-to-door to find out if people are interested in PAL in Ward 5. So, if we're talking about honesty, I don't know if that statement was exactly true.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any more comments from residents in the audience? If not, we'll start with comments from the Commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Bowman.
No major comment. Thanks to the chief for a good presentation. I thought it was factual, and I'm glad we voted for it. Thanks. That's all.
Mr. DeCicito.
I just want to welcome back the McKinley Elementary class of 2015-16, and they're crossing the streets, they're riding their bikes, they're waiting for the bus, so when you're driving through Abington, please drive like your kids live here. Please be safe.
Commissioner Brown.
No comment.
Mr. Gleskey.
I just wanted to congratulate the new hires, the police department, and of course, the retirees.
Mr. Heckler.
No comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
I just want to say a big thanks to the Tucanita Coney Frankfurt Woodshed Project and a number of volunteers. We're going to have 170 plantings and trees planted at the Ethel Jordan Memorial Parks. Fantastic program, and it costs zero tax dollars.
Commissioner Klein.
No comment.
Commissioner, it's a phone.
Yeah, just as a reminder to my residents, the Aardsley Family Day is approaching. It's October 3 at the Aardsley Community Center from noon to 6, and we're going to have food vendors, craft vendors, a car show, haunted house, pumpkin patch, and much, much more. And the rain date is the next day, Sunday, October 4. That's it.
Mr. Spiegel.
No comment this time, Mr. President.
Mr. Sanchez.
With everyone's indulgence at this late hour, especially because the animal control officer, Ron Griffith, is here, I just wanted to maybe end on a positive note here and read a letter that I received from Philip Chappalis on behalf of the Chappalis family. He's on Township Line Road in Ward 7. This is dated Tuesday, September 8, 2015. "To the Board of Commissioners, please read our letter at your Thursday night meeting. Thank you. This is an unsolicited letter. Our animal control people are absolutely great public workers. We telephoned animal control today around 8:30 AM..."
We telephoned animal control today around 8:30 a.m. regarding an adopted dog from a shelter. We already have three other dogs, a total of four dogs. The shelter refused absolutely to take back the unruly bite-prone dog. By 11 a.m., animal control had the dog back into the shelter. Problem solved in two and a half hours. Please commend and praise the animal control department. We are respectfully yours, the Chappalas family." Thank you.
Sir, Commissioner Myers.
No comment.
Mr. Markman.
No comment.
Commissioner Kowalski.
So I'll make a real quick comment. Continuing a tradition of over 30 years, the Edge Hill Firehouse Pancake Breakfast will be October 3rd, 8 to 12:00. It's now being moved to the North Penn VFW to give back to the community again. We work with everyone. So that's just something that I want everybody to know, that you're all welcome to come to breakfast, October 11th, Sunday, 8 to 12:00.
Thank you. Commissioner Shriver.
No comment.
And lastly, I'll wrap up by saying Unity Day is this Saturday at Crestmont Park. I hope all can attend. Briefly, I just want to thank Larry Mateo and Van Struthers for helping with a very delicate property maintenance issue recently. Ron Griffith, animal control, kudos for him also. He's taken it upon himself to pick up some discarded furniture that was left in lots and took it upon himself to pick those up and make a proper disposition of those, and I thank him for that. And lastly.
What's, I'm sorry, you picked that up?
Discarded furniture. Someone dumped some furniture in a lot. And during his patrol, he picked it up and discarded it appropriately, so I thank him for that. And to the chief, Lieutenant Gallagher, who both professionally and tactfully handled a very delicate situation recently in Ward Five. So I wanted to commend him for how he went about his business very professionally and very tactfully. So with that, it's 11:41 for those who are watching. So it's been a very eventful evening. Got a lot done, and I thank you all for attending. Meetings adjourned.[1697.88]